Okay, sorry about that, we have a minor technical hitch. As always, it wouldn't be the Sheffield City Council if we didn't have some problem with the IT, it seems to be customary. And this young man here is our saviour, he's going to put it all right, aren't you? No pressure there then. Welcome to the first meeting of this committee, the Education, Children and Families Committee, which is one of the new committees set up under the new system of governance that we've adopted this year, starting in May. So, we're all feeling our feet a little bit here. So, I'm asking for a little bit of patience if people start stuttering and maybe get the wrong paper or whatever it might be. And also, I'm asking a plea to those people who may be watching us, just to be nice to us, just for the first time. If we get it wrong the second time, then you'll have cause to complain. Housekeeping rules, well, I think everybody here ought to know where the toilets are by now. But there shouldn't be, as far as I know, a fire alarm test. So if it goes off, it's a real one and we need to get out either through that door or that door, as quickly but safely as possible. And for the benefit of our viewers, I think I am going to go round the table, or round the room, and introduce ourselves. And there may be people in this room that have met each other for the first time. So, I'll start with me, councillor McRoney, I am co-chair of this committee, and we will go that way.
Thank you Chair. Sarah Bennett, Assistant Director of Legal and Governance.
Good afternoon everyone, I'm John McElrath, I'm the Executive Director for People's Services.
It's Brian Homshaw, councillor for Brumhill and Sherraville and Deputy Chair of the Committee.
Councillor Peter Garbutt for Netheredge and Sherr.
Councillor Anne May-Fee for the Manor and Castlewood.
Kim Wilson, Assistant Director for School Effectiveness.
Tim Armstrong, currently Head of Access and Inclusion within the Education Skills Directorate.
Andrew Jones, Director of Education and Skills.
Mark Sheikh, Head of Service, responsible for school funding and children and families.
I'm Ryan Keyworth, I'm the council's Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Councillor Colin Ross, Doran Totley Ward and Group spokesman on Education, Children and Families.
Councillor Anne Witaker for West Echelsfield Ward.
Councillor Mike Drabble, elected member for Richmond.
I'm Emily Stanbrook Shaw, Policy and Improvement Officer, here today on behalf of Democratic Services Taking the Minutes.
Right, thank you very much for that. If you don't already know, if you don't press the button for the mic, obviously people can't hear you, but then the audience has no idea who's speaking, because the camera, I believe, follows the mic. So, I have this little routine, which I always forget, it's brain, finger, button. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Apologies for absence, I know councillor Dawn Dale and councillor Gail Smith have both sent their apologies, I don't think there's any others, are there? No? Okay, so can we register those? Exclusion of press and public, if they were here, I wouldn't throw them out, we just would like them to come along and listen, with their own. Any declarations of interest? Councillor Garbutt, you were first.
Thank you Chair, I'm Director of one of the possible alternative providers shift, so I'm not a paid director, but there's no pecuniary incidents here.
Anne?
I'm a respite foster carer, I don't work for Sheffield City Council, but I'm also an addiction specialist, and I often work with families where one or both parents have got some type of addiction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? No. Public questions and petitions, we don't have any as such, but Ruth Hubbard did send myself and Dawn and councillor Garbutt an email, making some observations on one of the items today. Councillor Garbutt is actually a local councillor, so we're going to slightly bend the rules, I suppose, but councillor Garbutt, when we get to that item, he's going to ask them on or off, but otherwise, we haven't got any that I'm aware of. Is that correct? Okay. Right, we're into the main stuff now, the easy stuff, the budget. Could I just ask, and this is for all officers, in this room, we've got people of varying degrees of knowledge of this area, various abilities to understand large figures and graphs and all that sort of thing, and some people are relatively new to the council as well. So, if you add to that, that there are people, hopefully, you know, in their thousands, watching us this afternoon, could you try to not assume anything? Because you've got to get the message over, not only to us in here, but to the people out there who will be living with the consequences of these budgetary decisions. So, I hope that, that sounded a bit clumsy, but what I'm saying is, you know, keep it simple, so that we can all understand it, really. Okay, Ryan?
Thank you Chair, I'll certainly try and take your advice on board. Please genuinely pull me up if I'm saying things that don't make any sense, that's not the intention here at all, this is supposed to be accessible. The report you've got in front of you fairly clearly, I think, sets out that the council is in a very challenging financial position. The report sets out four things really, a summary of the outturn for 21/22, so last financial year, the use of reserves that the council is making, forecasts for this year, which includes some detail relevant to this committee, and the outlook and budget timetable as we move through to setting the budget for the next financial year 23/24. The report is structured in a way that each policy committee is receiving the same report with relevant detail inserted into the middle of the report. So, the Housing Committee tomorrow will receive the same top and tail of the report, the front of the report and the back of the report will be the same, but with detail relevant to the Housing Committee. So, every committee is getting a consistent set of information on this first round of committee meetings. It won't be like that every time, because it won't need to be, but I wanted to make sure this first time around, that everyone had got a really clear position of the whole council's situation. So, the outturn for last year, the result, the financial result for last year was 19.8 million pounds overspend. That equates to about 4% of our net revenue budget, to give that some scale and context. That is a little bit better than we thought it was going to be earlier in last year, but it's still an unsustainable position and isn't something that we can ignore, we're certainly not ignoring it, and it's not something that we can allow to continue either. The council allocated 70 million pounds of reserves, reserves is another word for the savings account, it's one-off money, when it's gone, it's gone. 70 million of reserves to help us support the budget last year and this year, to get us and to give us some time to get onto a stable financial footing, so to remove the overspend position that we've got coming forward from last year. We also, so we've used 20 of that already, to balance last year's budget, to deal with that overspend. We also used 15 million of that money to set the budget in March 2022, this last March. So, the budget we set this year was a deficit budget, balanced by using 15 million out of the reserve savings account to make it balance. That's not a sustainable position either, and that was entirely part of the strategy of giving ourselves some time and space to make savings, to change the way the council operates, to reduce our cost base back down to something more like the level of income that we're able to get from government and from things like council tax and business rates. What the report also shows on Large Numbers, page 12, is the way that the council has prioritised investment in social services, so that's both adults and children, over the last 10 years. That graph shows how expenditure on adults and children's social services has risen by about 6% on average over the last 10 years, and 8% per year over the last five years. So, that's a clear prioritisation by the council over the long term actually, into some of the services that this committee is responsible for. If I were to strip out the position for children's services, children's social services, this is not education, that's different, funded differently, you'd get a fairly similar position, although there were some lumps and bumps as various grant regimes ended a few years ago. Overall, at month one, the council is looking at an 18.7 million pound overspend for this year, so actually a similar position to that which we finished last year. Most of that overspend is because of budget implementation plans, in other words, savings, that were agreed as part of the March budget, that we are struggling to deliver for one reason or another. There's also some underlying pressure overspend in the council's budget relating to energy costs, which I'm sure will not be a surprise to anybody in the room or listening online. That pressure in the council is several million pounds, and what we've managed to do so far is find one-off funding to cover that overspend this year. So, in the report, you see overspend mitigated, offset by one-offs. So, that's what that's doing. That obviously isn't sustainable, you can't use one-off money to deal with an ongoing problem forever, it can buy you some time, and that's exactly what it's doing at the moment. So, in respect of this committee, the report sets out in a little bit of detail the financial position. If I just scroll down to it like I suspect everybody else is doing, this committee is looking at an overspend of about 4.6 million pounds for the year so far. That is mainly, with a few other little ins and outs, within the children and families area. That is almost entirely down to slow delivery of budget implementation plan savings, so exactly the comment made about the council as a whole. So, that's set out on Large Numbers, page 16, in section 1.4.2. The reasons for the overspend are detailed on the following page, so that's page 17, which essentially sets out what I've said. There are some budget implementation plans that are proving difficult to deliver, and the ask of the committee is essentially to commission work from offices to ensure that this situation is addressed and managed, and that either those plans are delivered or that alternatives are identified by officers in conjunction with the committee, to bring the committee back within a balanced position by the end of the year. That leads me on to the outlook and the budget process for 23/24. We've got a significant and challenging position to try and deal with. We don't expect to get significant, or we can't plan that we are going to get significant additional funding from government. We have no indication from government that any funding is going to be forthcoming, and the normal way that government funding is announced is an autumn statement sometime in October, with detailed financial allocations to individual councils like us, just before Christmas. That's far too late for us to run a budget process, so we have to make an assumption now and move forward on that basis, in the hope that we've either got it right, or if anything, we've been a little bit pessimistic in our assumptions, and we get a little bit more money at the December settlement than we anticipated, which allows us to take some of the more difficult savings that we might have agreed as part of the process off the table at that late stage, rather than the opposite, which is to make very aggressive budgeting assumptions and find ourselves in a very difficult position around Christmas and a rapid scramble to find additional savings, which is never a good way to run an organisation of any size, let alone this size. So, we're looking at a significant budget gap that could easily be 60 million pounds going into next year. As a result of that, and the position we're in this year, I've decided to bring the budget timetable forward by about three months, and the Strategy and Resources Committee approved that timetable at the meeting last week. So, the next meeting of Strategy and Resources will be looking at a medium-term financial strategy for the council, which will set out the funding that we believe we have available to us over the next couple of years. That will also set targets, budget targets, for each of the policy committees, including this one. So, those recommendations will be made to Strategy and Resources on the 5th of July, and that effectively starts the budget process. Each policy committee will then have some work to do, significant work to do, over the summer period, so from that 5th of July Strategy and Resources meeting through to the round of committee meetings in September. When there's an ask, or the recommendation to Strategy and Resources will be that policy committees are asked to come back to their policy committee meetings in September with proposals on how they are going to hit their budget targets that Strategy and Resources will set. The idea then is to consolidate that committee work into a report to Strategy and Resources in October. There's an opportunity at that point for a round two of the budget process, should it be required, leading up to a second report to Strategy and Resources in December. At that point, from a purely timetable perspective, we need to have resolved the budget challenge for 23/24. That will allow any final consultation to take place, and actually, the proper approvals that are required before the Housing Committee report to council in February, which will set the rent, and the main general fund revenue budget report to council in March, which will approve the council tax, as I'm sure many members who've done this before will know. So, that's where we need to get to, and that, I think, is the end of my presentation, Chair, and I'm very happy to take any questions that members may have.
Thank you Ryan. We'll start with Mike Drabble.
Thank you Chair, and thank you for your presentation. Right. If I read the report correctly, based on what you've said today, we seem to be facing two main issues. The first is that funding, well, you know, I think we'd be optimistic if we thought it was going to increase. We certainly face, you know, no increase in funding and possibly even a reduction. Also, we're facing the fact that demand, not only is demand at the moment outstripping our ability to meet that demand, it's also that in the future, thanks to the Covid pandemic and some of the mental health issues related to that, thanks to the fact that this winter promises to be one of the hardest winters in living memory for many people in our community in terms of rising costs and other things, indicates that perhaps, demand for our services is going to increase even further. So, I suppose what I'm asking is, what can we do, if we recognise here that, you know, this situation is unsustainable, as you have said, what levers do we have to try and address this budgetary problem that will not affect vulnerable children and the most vulnerable people in our society? Because, at the risk of being presumptuous, I think it can speak for every elected member here, when I say, we do not want the vulnerable to suffer. Now, I can see a situation where yourselves are officers and may have to make some very hard choices in terms of funding, and I'm just inviting you to give some reassurance now, so what can we do, what levers do we have to ensure that any choices that are made by yourselves and made by us in here, don't affect the most vulnerable? You know, are there ways we can start to address this budgetary deficit, accepting as we do that maybe funding will not increase further? Are there ways we can address this budgetary deficit without people out there who need these services suffering? Thank you Chair.
I think it's very difficult at this stage councillor, for me to give you that assurance, to be quite honest. The choices that we will face, because we've not got enough money to provide the services that you've identified, and I can completely understand why you would say that this winter will be incredibly difficult, I agree entirely with what you're saying. And a big driver of demand for services covered by this committee, particularly the children's social services, is poverty. The detailed analysis of where people who use this service come from in the city will tell you that the wards, the areas of the city with the highest rates of poverty are also the areas of the city where people who use this service come from. If poverty increases because of a cost of living crisis, because of energy price inflation or any other factor, you will almost certainly see an increase in the demand for these services. At the limit, that's what causes families to break down, which is what leads to that demand. If we don't get additional funding from government, can I in any way guarantee that we will be able to somehow find money to ensure that none of those people suffer? I can't give you that assurance, I'm afraid. One of the things that this committee will need to do, as will other committees, is look very carefully at the services we provide, to ensure that the services we do provide are, as far as we are humanly able, protecting those people that you refer to. But a blanket assurance, I'm afraid, I'm unable to give you.
Thank you Ryan, and I understand that, that you can't give a blanket assurance now, but I have to say, I find that answer a little unsatisfactory, I'm not asking you for a blanket assurance, what I'm asking is that yourself and colleagues here can give us an indication that you're putting serious thought into it, and what some of the avenues might be. We understand we're in a difficult situation here, you know, we're in a place where none of us, any of, none of us in this room want to be. But I think if we start with the attitude of just, it's going to be difficult, well, that doesn't seem to give hope to any of us. If we can start with the statement that it's going to be difficult, but these are the avenues we have, I think it would provide all of us here with much greater reassurance. If you can offer something like that.
I think John McElrath would like to add to the discussion. John McElrath would like to add to the discussion.
Thank you Chair, and thanks councillor for your question, and I just want to echo a little bit what Ryan said in terms of the challenges and without the assurance of further funding from government. However, there are some things already in place, so the service already has a plan for savings, and as this report suggests in the recommendations, there will be further work, members can choose to commission further conversations and work over the summer to bring back in September for some decisions, where we can look at what options are on the table and how we can mitigate the impact on the most vulnerable children and families in the city. The other thing I would share is that some of you may be aware of the National Children's Care Review led by Josh McAllister, which I think was published just two weeks ago, and in his report, one of his recommendations to government, the review of social care, is a 2.6 billion pound investment in children's services over the next four years to help with redesign and doing things differently, and there are a number of other proposals within that report that might help us redesign some of our services. What we haven't got at this moment in time though, is the response from government to the government commissioned review of children's care. So, we're learning as we go over the next few days and weeks, which will feed into the summer conversations. Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Have you finished Ryan?
Yes, thank you.
Colin Ross?
Thank you Chair, and thank you Ryan for giving us all the, in very succinct terms, a difficult position, and I think we're all very well aware of it. A couple of points, just for clarity, these 4.7 overspend, is that just in month one, or is that the projected overspend for the full year?
That's the projected overspend for the full year.
Okay, thank you. That's a little bit better than 12 times 4.7 million, as I say, I just needed that. And actually, to answer and following on from councillor Drabble's point, really, one of the recommendations, I think we'll all agree, is do some more work over the summer, come back to this committee in September, and that's when we will be faced with actually making some decisions about where we have to actually implement some of the, which are going to be very difficult decisions for all of us to make in order to bring it back into balance. I note from page 15 on the report, you know, looking at just the people portfolio, the bits in red, you know, just don't look deliverable, and there's also a comment about, further on page 16, but also increased income from health looking unlikely, so, you know, various options are not optimistic, so I'm perhaps just warning colleagues that September is going to be, you know, very tricky for us if some of the projected savings are undeliverable, we've got to make some more, now, you can come back on that. And, yeah, that was the point I was going about, yes, thank you.
Thank you Chair, I can just come back on that very briefly. You've read the report correctly councillor Ross, what I would stress is, this is a month one report, this is the position as at the 30th of April. It's a really early in the year report, so there's plenty, you're right, there is an opportunity or a risk that further issues will emerge through the year, and I'm sure they will, and they do every year, and we sometimes manage to deal with them and sometimes don't. There is also an opportunity and plenty of time for some of the issues, for example, the conversations with health or others, to progress through the year that would see a position improve, based on what we thought at the end of April, so that it's not set in stone because we're forecasting it now. There is an opportunity for improvement or change.
You're giving us a little glimmer of optimism and wucks all the gloom there, thank you for that. Keep on smiling. Peter?
Thank you Chair, we, I think we passed at the last council meeting, the idea of getting in place a corporate opportunities register to identify new ways of working or new funding streams. How far ahead about it's even started yet, because it's only a couple of weeks ago at the meeting? But is this something that you think might be able to offer new streams of funding? How optimistic are you of that?
I think there's every opportunity for this committee, for example, to create its own register of opportunities that we as officers can work with members on to explore. We are very open to any and all suggestions as to how we might secure additional funding from elsewhere. I'm a big fan of getting other people to pay for the things we want to do, and also where we might work differently or better with partners to deliver the outcomes that we're trying to achieve for the people of Sheffield, in a way that requires less funding from the council, because as you can see, that's the tricky bit. So, whether we have a corporate opportunities register, or whether it actually makes more sense to hold that more at a committee level and do the work with committees, I think we can discuss, but the principle is eminently sensible and something that I think, you know, the conversations over the summer about the budget will be, you know, will find something like that very useful. Thank you very much.
Anne?
Yeah, thanks Chair, my question to Ryan really was in two parts, but John answered the first part of it, it was about the National Children's Review and whether, where we were with that, but also to follow on from what Peter's just suggested, I'm quite keen for the committee to look at that type of work and look at alternative funding streams through our partners, through the VCF sector, whoever we can find money from, that will pay for some of the work that we do, that can, yeah, we can suggest and put forward to the committee. Thank you, thank you Chair.
Do you want an answer to that, or are you just making a general comment?
It was just a general comment, I think Ryan's answered that quite succinctly, and John updated us on the National Children's Review. Thank you.
Ryan?
Thank you very much Chair, and thank you Ryan for putting yourself in the hot seat here. Councillor Drabble mentions levers, and it's levers I'm interested in. Councillor Daboll mentions levers, and it's levers I'm interested in, because there are going to be things that we can do and things that we can't do. And if we made all the things we can't do, we are going to put ourselves in a position where we are going to be negative about things. So I think levers are the thing that I would like to concentrate on, and I would like a bit more on this. In the context particularly of the BIPs, so the BIPs seem to be the key area of overspend, from what I can see. Let me just have a look at my notes. So how can any of those be speeded up and improved, if at all? Other areas such as direct schools grant, special educational needs and early years are quite minor compared, I hesitate to say this because it might change over the next few months, but they are quite minor compared to the BIPs. So that's one area which I think is a lever, maybe, which we can work on, although there are caveats on that. Secondly, is the area of the opportunities register, which has already been mentioned by my colleague, councillor Garbutt. It's just been voted for in full council, so this, I feel, is an opportunity. And I think you hit a key thing there, Ryan, in terms of being done perhaps within each committee. So it's going to have a committee focus rather than a top-down corporate approach to this, because there's going to be skills, there's going to be experience within each department as to what you can do to make a change here. So I wonder if you could answer towards some of that, and maybe some of the other directors might want to pitch in on what could be put forward on that.
Thank you. Thanks, perhaps I'll start, and if colleagues have got anything they wish to add as we go through, then please do. Yeah, on the opportunities register, I think, for me anyway, it's best at committee level. If we start trying to create corporate infrastructure to do this sort of stuff, we're going to create a process. If it's held at committee level, you're more likely to create something that is of use to you in dealing with the challenges that you face in your own remit. There'll obviously be things that are cross-committing, we can deal with those, but as a slimmer cross-council set of opportunities as opposed to trying to run a big, a big process, I don't think that necessarily applies. In some cases, budget implementation plan issues are down to timing. Some of these things are horribly difficult to do and are slow to get going. One of the reasons we set £25 million of reserves aside to back the £53 million of savings that we had in the budget is because we knew that some of these savings were going to take some time to get going. If you're doing a major departmental restructure, the top one on the list on Large Numbers, page 17, is around reduction in business support staff linked to investing in social workers, field workers. Very difficult to recruit field workers at the minute, as I'm sure John would echo, would agree, which is making that saving difficult to deliver. Also, re-engineering and restructuring large departments like this is not easy to do. So, you know, there's always going to be timing issues in implementing restructures like that. Similar with the capital expenditure, you know, developing a robust business case for significant capital expenditure isn't easy to do. That's taking a little bit of time as well. So I'm hoping, and the work that we're doing in the background very hard, is to turn these issues into timing issues as opposed to ongoing issues. What I really want is for none of these issues to roll forward into next year. It wouldn't be great if they all got solved in March, because that means we've got one month of savings this year instead of 12. But what I really don't want is for those issues to become a 23-24 problem to compound the problems we've got elsewhere in the organisation and in this service. So that's the real challenge, is how quickly can we get to these and how quickly can the organisation support some of these larger savings to get them over the line and get them delivered? I don't know if colleagues want to add any more to that.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, I mean, just to sort of amplify the point around the BIPs, I think it is about how the organisation supports children's services in realising some of those savings. So the reorganisation of children's services and the staff requires HR capacity, we need to work with our TU colleagues. So we need to work that through, that's a timing issue rather than a realisation issue. Similarly, the residential strategy, there is potential there, genuine potential, but we need to work with council colleagues in planning, building, design, they're not children's services skilled necessarily. So how does the organisation support children's services realise those savings? And we are already in conversations with Health and our colleagues in the room, Joe Horrabin, Director of Integrated Commissioning, about how we look differently about that relationship with Health to fund services with Health for children in the city. Going back to the care review, the care review also references fixing the broken care market and thinking about how we support children in loving relationships that aren't necessarily in organisations that are for profit, and that we can talk a little bit more about the care review at future discussions, maybe through the summer. And we can certainly take away an action to circulate the link to the care review national report, because there's some helpful ideas in there that we might be able to dovetail some of our thinking into and lock in some of those changes.
Thank you, Chair. Ryan, you said something a few minutes ago that made me think. Before I was a teacher, I was an accountant, so I do understand a little bit about these things, about the capital programme. The capital programme doesn't, isn't immediately relevant to whether we've got a budget deficit or what have you. Am I right in saying that?
In fact, I can come on to it. So one of the proposals was to effectively, two of the proposals, to make capital investment to reduce ongoing revenue costs. So in other words, yeah, build some buildings, run some provision ourselves at a lower cost than the private sector is currently doing. Some of the private sector provision is horribly expensive, as I'm sure you're familiar with. And also to, you know, make capital investment in one of our facilities that actually does generate a surplus, because we sell places in it to other local authorities. We're a well-regarded and very well-respected, actually, centre for that particular facility in Sheffield. So there's an opportunity, and one of the things we're exploring is whether we can extend that centre.
Thanks, that helps. Invest to save, basically, isn't it? But you were also saying that you can sell some of that space to other authorities. Is it not the case that we also buy space from other authorities? And is there room for savings on that?
So on the space that we intend to sell to other authorities, that's really quite specialist space. It's the secure children's home, Aldine House, up in Dorf. So not many facilities like that, and we certainly don't buy that kind of space from anyone else, because we have more than enough of it ourselves and we sell that space on to others. There is provision that we do source from outside the city, and exactly part of the point of the capital investment in terms of children's home capacity in the city is to avoid doing that. The closer we can keep children to their families, and, you know, fostering first, then local support, and so on and so on, the better. It's better for the child, it's also better for the budget, frankly. The two things go hand in hand.
Could I just interrupt for a second on that? Basically, the second Aldine House, if you were, is that, isn't the income from that, or I may have misread the paper, isn't the income from that included in this year's budget? Even though, you know, we haven't even agreed the capital for it yet?
Yeah, I think some of it is. There's a timing, obviously, a timing issue with it, but the task here is to stop it being a timing issue as far as we can, or stop it being an absolute issue.
Mike Daboll is the last one, and then I've got to, only because it's you, Colin, but...
Just, I think I ought to just say that as a governor at Aldine House, I ought to declare an exception. I wasn't going to realise it was coming up, but Aldine House too, I would be very, very surprised if it was anywhere near completed by the end of this year, because we haven't even identified a site for it yet.
That's why I'm expressing my surprise, that it's actually included in the budget, because we all know how long it takes to actually build things. Councillor Daboll, and then I've got to wind up, because we've got two and a half hours. The rules said that we can't go beyond two and a half hours, so we have to change those. Not that I'm a great believer in long meetings, but sometimes you need to put a little bit more time in just to do the job properly. Councillor Daboll.
Thank you, Chair, and going against title, I'll try and be concise. Just to follow up to councillor Garbutt's question regarding the development of in-house provision, I think one criticism of, you know, children's services provision across the country is that often managers in charge of provision are always fighting the last war in terms of provision that's developed. So I'm just, would like to ask, what analysis has been done to try and actually ascertain not only what's the provision we need now, but what are the likely provision needs in the future? You know, this seems to me an ever-fast-changing kind of sector, in which one of the reasons authorities across the country are struggling is because none of us, really, for very good reason, predicted some of the future trends. So, yeah, I'd just like to get an idea of what analysis we have done to ensure that we don't fall into the same trap that many people have done and can get ahead of the curve in provision, rather than just chasing. Thank you.
I don't know if any of the colleagues around the room have got any detail on this, perhaps. When we did the analysis on this about, I don't know, nine or 10 months ago, we were looking at a clear gap, as in, you could make that investment on a completely no-regrets basis for that provision, because we were so short of it in Sheffield. And you're not looking at a great number of places here, it's in the, probably, you know, around a dozen, if that, size. But, John, I don't know if you've got anything you can help me with on that.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I've not got a microphone. Do you want to use... I knew it'd be worth me listening in. I'm Joe Horrabin, Director of Integrated Commissioning at Sheffield City Council, and I think it's a really good question, and I'm happy to answer it. The matter of understanding our sufficiency and ensuring that there is sufficiency is a fundamental part of our duty and our requirements. I think it is fair to say that this is challenging to predict and very challenging to resource and to identify the funding for. That said, this is, my post is a new post, and we have a newly formed integrated commissioning function, and this is one of the priority areas for my team. We've recruited a new head of commissioning, Victoria Gibbs, for this area, and it is probably one of our highest priority areas to look at. So sufficiency in the context of children and families placements, ranging from the most specialist, as described by Ryan, but also looking at all of the options that we would want to be absolutely exhausted before we needed to place a child into something as specialist as that. Key part of sufficiency is how we mitigate demand and prevent, reduce delay to ensure better outcomes for children and young people and their families, and also to reduce pressure on those most expensive and complex settings. So the role of my team will be to look at both aspects of sufficiency, the provision and availability and market management and in-house development of services to meet need, including the forecasting and projection of need as best we can with Health as part of an integrated approach to supporting children and families, but also very much that early intervention and prevention. And we have some really exciting work that we are starting to progress this year. It's kind of a phase two, really, of work that we've done before, so I'm very happy to bring information on that back to the committee at September or when suits.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, through you, Chair. I'd like to, thank you for your answer. It seems at least we are considering this, and I really would like evidence of that analysis to be brought before this committee, perhaps as a regular item, actually, you know, because this is an ever-changing area. What are we doing to stay on top of these trends? That would be wonderful to hear. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I've a couple of questions myself. The £15 million that is in to sort of prop up this year's budget, have you any idea how much of that has been or is likely to be spent on propping up the children's budget? Because I'm trying to understand whether or not that 4.6 is in any way dependent on the £15 million. Can you see if that makes a sensible question? I'm not sure. I think it does, but you may not. And the other is, at what point in the budget process, with the BIPs, do you say, we're not going to do this? So we'll stop trying to do this, we'll stop wasting our time, and we're going to do something else. So there must come a point where you think, no, no, this is like head against a brick wall here. So, and I think in some of those, some of the BIPs that are struggling, I think maybe we're getting to a point where we have to say, it's not going to happen. This year's budget is frightening, next year is terrifying, because I don't see how we can actually make those figures add up. And I think, one last thing, is a request. I think what we don't do is put enough emphasis on the fact that a lot of this is due to underfunding. It's overspending almost sounds like reckless, you know, reckless chucking the money about here, there and everywhere and wasting this and wasting that. That isn't the case, and I think we need to put more emphasis on the paperwork and the message that we send out to whoever, that this is largely down to underfunding and increasing demand because of some decisions taken by a certain fluffy-haired bloke at number 10.
Thanks, Chair. Perhaps I should add, it was in slightly out of sync order. I think the report that John referred to, the Government Commission, effectively agree with your final statement here about underfunding. Yeah, as a finance officer, you're always going to get me reporting a position against a budget that was approved at council, so you get overs or unders on that. The point made very well often by members at council is that the budget, the bottom-line budget ain't big enough. And that report that John referred to earlier seems to support that position, certainly in respect to children's, and other reports have done the same for adults over the long term. The £15 million that's in the budget of use of reserves to balance the overall budget is just that. None of it's hypothecated or earmarked or linked to any particular service. It's not ex-money for children's, ex-money for adults, it's £15 million for the council. The £4.7 million overspend for this committee has got nothing to do with that £15 million. The two things are completely different. That £15 million was effectively us saying, our total expenditure for the council is going to be £15 million higher than total income, and we're going to dip into the savings account to bridge the gap. That's what it was.
Right, thank you.
One last thing, when do you draw a line under budget implementation plans if you're struggling to deliver them? That really is a matter for you as the committee to, with officers, to agree a point where you say, we're not going to be able to deliver this, what are our alternatives? And I suppose that's part of my asking this report to this committee to commission that work with officers, to do just that.
Okay, we've got, I think there's four recommendations, isn't there, at the beginning of the paper, which you're asking us to agree. Yeah? Is it four?
Yes, Chair.
It is, yes, Chair.
And one of the, I can't see a point, I can't see a problem with agreeing those. The only concern I've got is how we deal with what is in effect a very urgent budget situation. We can't wait until the next time we meet, because what we have, from what I can gather, what we've got to do is basically dismantle some of the BIPs, see, test them to destruction to see whether they are deliverable, and if they're not, then we have to find some others. And that's going to take quite an amount of effort by all of us concerned. So somehow or other, I think we've got to, we've got to have meetings outside of, outside of the former committee, just so that we get to a place in September where we have actually got, hopefully, some solutions to the problem. I don't know what members think. I don't know what members think about that. Do you think that's a reasonable summary, Ryan? I keep looking at you because you understand numbers.
I think that's essential Chair. I think all committees are going to need to work outside the formal cycle on the issues connected to the current year budget and next year's budget between now and, I mean, your next meeting's not until September. You are going to need to do work with your officers in that intervening period. So I think it's entirely sensible that you set that out now.
Not quite sure how we're going to set that up because there are so many of us. But I'll give that headache to somebody else. Last word Brian, because we do need to move on.
Okay, I just wanted to point out number three on the recommendations. We're talking about addressing the overspend here and an action plan needed for that. And I was going to point out again once more about the opportunities that are there as well as the mitigations. So there's an emphasis on mitigations, but also perhaps we have some opportunities here as well to improve the situation.
I think the point's well made Brian and I think it's been taken on board. And I'm sure if we don't take it on board, you will remind us again about it.
Thank you Chair, just a suggestion on convening the additional work through the summer months. As a suggestion, how about if I ask my office to work with the two co-chairs, the vice chair and the group spokesperson initially, to set meetings up around their diaries, but the invitation is to the wider group of members for briefings around what the current BIBs proposals are, our rag rating of said proposals and any alternatives. But we'll work initially with the diary of those four individuals, but extend it more widely.
Are you happy with that, those of you that wouldn't be involved in it? Yeah, I'm not, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I'm kind of happy with it, but not completely. Because I would really like to have some kind of input. So more than happy to join the meetings, but also to actually have an input via emails or whatever to that committee. Yeah, thank you Chair.
Sorry Chair, just to say that obviously the committee can commission tasks and finish groups or can agree to meet informally. Any decisions would need to come back to a committee. If you didn't feel that it could wait till September, it is possible to convene extraordinary meetings if that was felt necessary.
I think what we're saying is at least initially, it will be myself, Dawn, Colin, I believe, and Brian. And then once that has met, we will then widen it to everyone else to come along and contribute whatever in whatever way they like. Okay, thank you. Next item.
Have we got to agree the proposals?
Oh yes. Be a good idea. You've been around a while, haven't you Colin? You know the ropes. Oh, by the way, while I've got the microphone, congratulations on being chosen for Lord Mayor next year, isn't it? Fully deserved and I'm sure you'll do a good job. Right, can we agree the recommendations? Please don't say no after all of that. Yes, hooray, next item. Framework arrangement for the procurement of alternative provision in the city. And I think that's young Tim.
I'll introduce him, that's right. Okay Chair, the report's in my name.
And even younger looking, hadn't he?
I'll introduce him, but Tim's the author of the report, so he'll just fill the committee with more detail. So alternative provision is a type of education provision which is available to school aged children and young people aged 16 to 25, which operates outside of their normal school based provision. And is designed to make sure that children have provision against a range of criteria. In order to facilitate that, we have just two registered alternative provision providers in the city, namely the Sheffield Inclusion Centre, our pupil referral unit, and part of Beckton School that also makes provision for children, young people with medical needs. All other alternative provision providers in the city are deemed to be unregulated by virtue of the fact that they're not registered with Ofsted. And so the council has operated a framework to oversee that during the last number of years. And what we're seeking to do as we continue to review alternative provision in the city is to extend that framework for a further year in order to allow us to oversee alternative provision in the council. And I'll hand over to Tim now to talk through the detail of that.
So Andrew's slightly stolen the starting point of my thunder. As Andrew said, there's three different types of alternative provision. Alternative provision for children who are medically too ill to be in school, of which local authority commissions Beckton School. Children who are permanently excluded from school, of which we commission the Sheffield Inclusion Centre. And then the third one is in the language of the 2013 guidance, which is the guidance that we operate under here, is where schools direct a child to attend away from the school site in order to support and address challenges around their behaviour. Some interesting language in that, but essentially that's the bit that we're talking about today. We're not talking about the Inclusion Centre or the permanent excluded or medical at Beckton House. So as Andrew said, our landscape in the city is very much currently one of unregulated, i.e. not formal school provision for schools to direct children to off-site. And there's a range of different providers in the city. And schools can go to providers directly, they do that. But we try and encourage most providers to be on a framework so that we can ensure oversight and we can ensure accountability. And that's in part because Ofsted will, when they're talking to schools who use alternative provision, they will ask about the quality of that provision and it becomes part of a potential Ofsted judgment for that school. So our landscape is that we have a number of different providers that we're talking about. I wanted to just bring this into where this fits within wider strategic direction and why we're coming to a one-year framework at this point in time. Within the council's current one-year plan, we have an ambition to reduce exclusions in all forms. And as part of that, we're identifying where children are directed off-site. How do we make sure that that's used in an appropriate way and then used in the best way for that young person? And how do we support young people to make good progress in their education? Secondly, just to say that we'll be coming on to later the government's SEND and AP Green Paper. And I'll talk about the AP side of that later. But essentially what government is looking at is including alternative provision in all its forms in the SEND landscape. And as part of that, they're intending to do a request for evidence before the end of the summer around unregulated alternative provision, the type that we have in the city. So what we are doing and what we have been doing is working with some of our providers already on the framework, some of our schools and listening particularly to the voice of children and families to establish what does the offer need to be in the city. Unfortunately, we haven't managed to reach the point where we've got an agreement on that yet and a clear strategic plan and offer for the city. And yet we're at the point where our current framework has come to a legal end. So from a procurement point of view, from a purchasing point of view, we've come to the end point of the current framework. And so the ask today is to agree the strategy of essentially recreating the framework for 12 months whilst we review what our current offer is, set out a very clear direction and expectation for the future and understand what's likely to come from the Green Paper. That's why it's one year rather than a three-year, more stable position, which is what we would hopefully try to get to. What we do know is that alternative provision can have a massively positive effect for some young people in terms of making sure that we address the barriers to learning that they face. What we also know is that some schools aren't happy with all of the provision that they have and some schools are happy with all of the provision that they have available to them. And that's part of why we want to make sure that we're very clearly reviewing what the offer is in the city and making sure that it's fit for purpose and fit for the future. So the ask today, in terms of detailing of the paper and then I'm happy to take questions, is to approve the approach of commissioning a further framework and then we will progress that. Just to say, in terms of provision on the framework, essentially it's a transactional nature, i.e. schools pay for it, they give us a very tiny amount of money and we're talking pounds and the majority of the money goes direct to the provider. So the providers are dependent on what's bought by schools essentially. And that's why it's in a framework in the procurement process that it is. So this isn't a investment, a huge financial investment from us as a local authority into that provision. Schools use their funding to purchase the provision going forward. So happy to take questions, but the ask is to agree that we essentially put a framework in place that maintains the status quo for 12 months whilst we review what needs to be in place for the future, particularly in light of any potential changes around government policy.
Thank you Tim. Does anybody else, any of the officers want to chip in to what Tim said? No, happy with that. Right, we'll take questions. Firstly, it's Anne.
Thank you Chair, thanks Tim. I think it's been said several times in the children, young people and families scrutiny board over some years now that we've been unhappy about alternative provision in this city for quite some time now. But we've also forgotten who that alternative provision is about and that's the young people who attend that alternative provision. So I'd like to know how much work has been done with the young people about the alternative provision that is provided. And I'm quite concerned because I hear from various different parents that some schools are very, very good at working with the young people in their provision to try and keep them at school and find alternatives within the school that the young people can take part in. And then there are other schools that are not very good at that and actually are quite quick and keen to get to exclude the children and that they will send them to quite inappropriate placements. So I'd like to know a little bit more about that. I'm also quite concerned at the moment about the number of children that are missing from school. Have we got any numbers? Certainly since lockdown and the pandemic, I know that there are quite a few children just not attending school. And I'd like to know what work we're doing with the parents of those children. I don't particularly want to hear that it's a punitive nature because of the situation we're in with the cost of living crisis. I don't want to be sort of just told that these parents will be fined because I don't think that's the answer to getting these young people back to school. And again, we have got some really good higher education facilities in the city and I would like to know what courses and what provision there is there for younger people to attend those courses rather than doing their GCSEs or, you know, a more practical based type of education rather than academic education. I think that's where a lot of these young people, especially our looked after children, actually fall out of education when they just are not keeping up with the educational ability of some of their peers and what provision there is for those types of children. So several questions there Tim, I'm sorry. But I know you're looking and asking for an extension, but I think we've been slightly, hugely unhappy about the provision to date anyway. So it would be just good to sort of catch up with that and what we're doing about that. Thank you. Thanks Chair.
Okay, I'll try not to miss anything, but apologies if I've missed anything off the list. So first and foremost, fully understand that there's a view that potentially unhappiness with the current alternative provision offer that's out there. I think the picture and the background in the city has been one of evolution rather than clear strategic plan and delivery. And I think that's part of providers meet gaps and that's part of schools are desperate to find alternative options out there. If we go back 20 years, and I'm not going to give you 20 years of history, objective one funding in the city meant that there was a lot of investment, particularly around vocational offers. So you talked about the college and further education providers offering alternatives to GCSEs. I actually used to work at the college delivering all of their provision and overseeing it 20 years ago. So maybe I'm not quite so young as Mick's identifying there. But I think what we've seen is a lot of evolution rather than a very clearly defined strategic vision for this. And I think that's what we're trying to do now and that's why we want to not rush into something but put the framework in place for 12 months whilst we get the right thing in place. So in terms of that and hearing what's the right thing for young people in particular, as we've been looking at reviewing what our current offer is, part of what we're trying to do is go and talk to young people and their families about what they're seeing, what their experience is, so that we're hearing what schools are looking for, but actually we're hearing what the experience of vulnerable young people is in terms of that offer. And obviously in terms of this, I'm only talking about that AP that isn't permanent exclusion and medical and I think there's some conversations for us to have there. So we are very much trying to hear the voice of young people in terms of what our future offer will be. In terms of some schools being good and some schools being less good, I would agree. I think different schools have different challenges. We see quite high rates of exclusions and suspensions still. So government language is now exclusion for permanent exclusion and suspension for, well, we're back to suspension after going for fixed term exclusion for some time. And that comes for a raft of different reasons in terms of what's going on within those individual schools. One of the values of having this framework is that schools work with our officers to talk about the provision they're putting in place. So there's a check and balance to say to the school, okay, have you done X, Y and Z? What have you done in school? What's the purpose of placing this child out of school? Because we don't want our children out of school unless there's a very specific reason and a very intended targeted purpose for it to enable them to get back into education. So yes, there is varying practice in the city, but the framework hopefully allows us to create those questions. And I think part of the fact that we now have the one-year plan and that intent for exclusions in all its forms means that we start to ask about AP as part of a bigger continuum of provision. So one of the tasks I was given in this role was to look at what my exclusions in all its forms in the city look like. So we have a plan with increasing our investment in terms of that, so particularly around attendance and I'll come back to that in a minute. But we've also joined through the Access and Inclusion Service, different services together so that the alternative provision team sits alongside the virtual school, which sits alongside our inclusion and attendance, which sits alongside home education, which sits alongside children missing out on education. So there's a greater join up in my management team to say, how is what you're doing impacting over there? And how are we joining up the picture? And part of that is that where we're seeing children who are excluded or suspended, go back to the right language, we're making sure we're asking schools what's happening and what they're doing to try and address those needs. So yes, schools are different in their approaches, but we're trying to make sure that we're challenging why and what's the purpose and function of that alternative provision whilst we also come up with a very clear strategic plan. You talked a little bit about numbers of children missing from school. I haven't got the direct numbers in front of me because I didn't bring it for this paper, but we do know that there has been substantial challenges, particularly post pandemic. Our attendance as a city is substantially worse than other local, than core cities, stat neighbours, National and Yorkshire and Humber. And so part of what we need to be doing and part of the reason why we've got additional investment into our attendance team is to do that. Now, that's not to go out and say, let's fine every parent, because we know that that doesn't have the effect that we want it to do. It's to go and actually, and work with schools and say, what can we do to bring young people back into education? And the conversations that we're having with schools is how do we bring together the issues around special educational needs, around mental health, around family support needs and the barriers that that child faces? So the exclusions in all its forms plan is trying to address that. And there's newly released government guidance that's live in September on school attendance, which says that for every child under 50% attendance in the city, we should be meeting schools on a termly basis to discuss the plan. So that won't be about punitive measures. So that won't be about punitive measures, definitely won't be in the first instance about punitive measures. We will use punitive measures, it's one of the tools in the armoury, but it will be everything else as well first. And the last bit, I think, and hopefully we've got all of them, was around FE provision in the city. As I said, I used to run lots of stuff when I worked for the college. It's a conversation that my colleague Kevin Strawn's having with the college around what the vocational option might be, because you're absolutely right. I regularly use the example of the young man who, instead of being in Spanish and geography, came into painting and decorating, and was at risk of exclusion in year 10. He was a great guy to hang out with in terms of stuff. By the end of year 11, he was making progress and used as a very real champion for that curriculum area. The challenge that we've got is that our anchor further education organisation has not been where it needs to be from an Ofsted point of view to be able to invest in that. But I think there's work ongoing to try and ensure that we can bring that into play because you're absolutely right, the vocational offer sometimes is right for young people and will be part of what the AP offer is in the future. I'm hoping I've answered all other things there for you.
Just a reminder, we've got about an hour and 20 minutes, so if people could be conscious of that, otherwise these two blokes in there are going to come round and throw us out. Peter.
Thank you, Chair. I think the questions that I've got on this email that the Chair allowed me to ask have mainly been answered, but I'll re-ask them anyway, just to make sure that Ruth Hubbard is satisfied they've been asked. Okay. What do we know about the experiences of children? I think you've mentioned that you've been talking to children and the parents in Sheffield regarding the accessing of alternative provision. And how does it shape that alternative provision or influence it? And what sort of range of alternative provision does that give rise to or might it give rise to in the future? I think that covers what she's asking, but I've got a few questions of my own as well. Having worked in this area, I know very well that there's a variety of reasons why people don't attend school. And the alternative provision, while I've worked in two or three, are very different and address a very different set of reasons. One of them was very vocational, as councillor Murphy was pointing out, and the other was very basic in terms of actually just teaching English and maths, which were the only two things that the children really needed. One of the other problems that has arisen that I've been hearing about quite a lot recently, since I left the education world, is that a lot of schools, this is, I have no evidence for this, this is all the things that I've been told, a lot of schools who want to have the children no longer on their books, try and persuade parents to home educate. And I want to know if that, if that particular allegation has any basis in fact, and if so, what's happening? Because as far as I can see, that would be bordering on illegal from the schools. So I think those are the questions that I've got. I hope you've got some answers.
I'll try and be as speedy as possible so we can do it. So I think in terms of, hopefully I've answered the question around how we're hearing the voice of young people, particularly as we look going forward. And I think one of the things that I'm aware across the director area we just appointed is a participation voice officer linking to the local offer. And so we want to make sure there's some link there in terms of making sure we're continuing to hear the young person's voice, and our commissioning colleagues are looking at how we make sure we commission to hear young people's voices more, because I think you're absolutely right, we need to make sure we understand their voice and what that leads to. In terms of the range of AP in place, there's quite a lot currently, but it is very variable in terms of what it offers, and you're right, some is very much about engagement and doing activities and getting a young person somewhere, other is vocational. What we're looking at going forward in terms of future options, probably the vocational elements, so replacing one subject with another, some form of timeout and step out for young people at risk of permit exclusion to do intensive work, because it seems that that might be a gap. And these are all from the current work we're doing, something that's very much about engaging kids who are not in education at all. I used to run a provision in another local authority that was for the most disengaged kids from learning, kids who just couldn't access anything. And so we need to look at that. And then very much an intervention based approach that says, yes, there's learning, but actually how are we changing the situation for that young person to move them forward and help them to achieve? So that's our current thinking, but we, you know, we'll come back once we've got further clarity in terms of what we want to do in the future. In terms of the HE, obviously this paper's not about HE, but that does fit in my remit as well. I'm sure we'll talk about it at this committee at various points in time. What I would say is that I can't tell you that parents aren't encouraged occasionally down the route for home education. If we are ever made aware of it, we challenge the school directly and we expect the school to maintain that child on roll. What we are doing very specifically is in trying to ensure that where parents end up home educating for reasons other than their philosophical approach, i.e. because they want to deliver that education, we work with them to try and say, how do we help move them back into the right learning? And after quite a substantial rise in families choosing home education during the pandemic, which has not dropped to the level we'd have liked it to, so it wasn't the case of pandemic I'm out, no pandemic, not that we're no pandemic, but you know what I mean, and back in, we've increased the resourcing into that team so that there's better conversation with our families to say either, how do we help you back into school or how do we make sure that things are happening effectively? So we're very much on it, but absolutely if cases are made known to us, and we will go and ask the school for what they have done and challenge that behaviour.
Thank you, Chair. It will be very brief. Reading ahead to the green paper, that there is something that homeschooling will be something that Ofsted will be taking much more interest in. So how will that affect things?
So within the white paper, there is an expectation of registration scheme. What's not, and that's currently in the Schools Bill going through, it's in the Lords at the minute, and is an expectation that parents register, because currently there is no requirement to register. But obviously, we maintain a register of any families we know about. There should then be an offer of support, there's no clarity really within the legislation to say what that offer of support should look like. And there's yet to be any guidance as to what will happen if parents don't register, other than we would look towards school attendance orders if a child, if appropriate. So I'm waiting to see what comes from the guidance that follows the legislation, but DF has said this is a priority for them amongst their very many, to ensure that we know which children are home educated, because on a national basis, there are a number of children who aren't necessarily known to the local authority. That doesn't mean that they're not receiving a suitable education, but we don't know that they definitely are.
Andrew.
I've just had a couple of points of clarity. So in relation to elective home education, we have a local agreement in Sheffield, which is not, which is peculiar to Sheffield, it doesn't happen in other local authorities, where a child becomes elected to home educated for a 12 week period afterwards. If their parents change their mind, then they have an automatic right to be reinstated back in their school. And that allows the team of officers that Tim's referring to to actually have those conversations with parents away from the heat of the moment, to actually ascertain whether the decision that they've made has been done fairly and without undue influence from anybody else as part of that. And that's a unique agreement that we've got in Sheffield. And already Ofsted take a great interest in elective home education. I meet with Kim, my assistant director with Ofsted, three times a year, and with John and Carly, speech to the director of Children and Families, once a year for an annual conversation. And elective home education, our statistics and what we're doing to ensure that provision is adequate and those children are safe features very highly upon that. And even in terms of alternative provision, and I've explained that they're unregulated in Sheffield, but we work very closely with Ofsted to support the prosecution of an unregulated school in Sheffield, one of the few successful prosecutions of an unregistered school outside of London.
Excellent. Colin. Could I ask that officers also remember that we've got to be out of here two and a half hours?
Thank you. Actually, we have at the pre-meeting put home schooling on the agenda for future agenda items, so we'll explore this more in depth. We're going to support the proposals because it's, obviously we need to do it anyway. It would be difficult if we weren't, but putting together the green paper and where we are in Sheffield, I think it's entirely sensible to have a one year. And as other members have said, using that year to actually find out the scope of our alternative provision. And I think we've all seen, perhaps as governors of schools, some alternative provision that's worked well, some that's worked well for some, same settings, it sometimes works for one pupil and not for another. Some schools have got their own alternative provision in house, you know, work related, you know, groups that are especially in years 10 and 11. And I think we need to perhaps have a more coherent framework about what, where we've got, you know, because whilst we've got the two registered centres that rest like Willerhall Farm, which I'm familiar with, is there providing quite a lot of alternative provision, but it's not registered, need to be included. I notice at page 25, point 1.1, the AP framework will give head teachers an option to provide alternative education provision for vulnerable pupils who find difficult to engage with mainstream school. That strikes me as we've got, might well have a capacity issue, which is all part of the discussions, I think, that other members have raised before. Because if head teachers are going to be given more scope to use alternative provision off-site, we need to have sufficient capacity and regulated quality assessments of that provision. My last point is, the 750k budget for this doesn't see very much, but that's because schools will be paying for the alternative provision, which actually, to address some of other members' points, mitigates a little bit against just getting them off our books because they still have to pay for them as well, which is quite an important point. Okay, so questions really, quality and capacity, how are we going to ensure that over this review in over the one year?
So quality questions in the green paper and a proposal to look at a different quality approach for alternative provision across the board on a national basis. So part of the work that we're doing about reviewing is what does that look like now in terms of our quality framework for provision? So that's part of that ongoing review this year. Capacity, absolutely, we need to understand what our real need is in the city in terms of what good provision looks like. What we're seeing, as I said, is sometimes it's absolutely targeted and the right provision, and sometimes it's not the right provision and it's children out of school. So we need to make sure that our capacity is around sufficiency, and that includes all three parts of the AP framework, network. So we do and are looking at our sufficiency planning around the exclusion, the medical and off-site provision. So that's all within the work that we need to do over this next year.
Happy with that, Colin. Mike.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your answers so far. As part of your introductory remarks on the presentation here today, you seem to suggest that the reason you're asking for the one year extension on this is because the work on determining exactly what provision we need hasn't yet been completed. You used the word unfortunately in connection with that, which seems to suggest it's a matter of luck that that provision hasn't been, that work hasn't been completed. I'm sure it's not a matter of luck, but there are concrete and specific reasons. What are those reasons?
Thank you. So possibly a bad use of the word unfortunately. What I mean within that is that the two things haven't aligned. So us doing that piece of review with the end of the current framework hasn't aligned, and so we do need more time in terms of it. So it's not that there's been poor planning or poor execution of that review work, it's that the two, it needs to be a longer piece of work than our current framework would allow us to do. So the current framework is legally at an end, which is why we have to put in a new framework.
So can I ask, what are the reasons then that it needs to be a longer piece of work?
I think primarily to make sure that we've got it right. The green paper is making suggestions around AP, and we know that's coming down the track, so we need to hear that and listen to that. And we want to make sure that we've absolutely heard the voice of children, young people in it. So we want to take our time to hear what's the right thing for the city, as well as talking to our providers and our schools about what they need.
So that seems really loadable. So can I just ask that going forward, we might have some deadlines then that we can check back on to ensure that this work is done in time? Because as others on the committee have said, it seems this piece of work is really needed.
A couple of questions myself before I wind it up. Are you confident that the final version of the send and white paper proposals will coincide with the emergence of our framework? Because you seem to be saying that, you know, the reason you want it for a year is so that you can slot the recommendations on send and all and other things into that. And I'd hate you to miss each other, as it were. And the other two are going to show my probably ignorance of this subject area. The previous framework was only about a year as well, wasn't it? If I've read the papers right. So what, why is it, if I've got that right, why is it that we're only having a year at the time that I have one? And the other thing that, when somebody says unregulated and children, then I get nervous. Because, well, I don't think I have to explain why I get nervous when people say unregulated. So are we saying that the majority of providers in this city, that schools refer children to are unregulated? And if that's the case, I'm really worried about that. It could be anybody. And should, if they, the non-regulated providers, are they on the framework? Or is it, does the fact that they're unregulated keep them off the framework? And should we be saying, some of this may not make a lot of sense, but should we not be saying, unless you're regulated, or we inspect you, or we regulate you, you're not coming on the framework? Hope that makes sense.
It does make sense. So I'll start in reverse order then in terms of that. So unregulated, what we mean by that is a provider that is not under an Ofsted inspection framework. So any provider, any education provider that comes under Ofsted is a formal school and they're inspected by Ofsted, they follow those processes. The majority of our provision in Sheffield is not a registered school. So our framework provides the quality assurance and oversight to say that it is suitable provision, and particularly thinking about safeguarding health and safety and the quality of provision, to say that it's suitable provision, and we have made those checks on schools' behalfs. Where a school doesn't, where a provider isn't on the framework, or a school purchases a provision off the framework, i.e. they go direct, then the school needs to make sure, because essentially the school has placed that child there. So it's the school's responsibility to make sure that that child is safe, receiving a suitable education, and that's why Ofsted are asking. And I've had two phone calls, including one on the day's leave at quarter to five from a school about an inspector saying what's happening here in the past three months. So it's an unfortunate word to some extent, because it does exactly what I would do in terms of going, oh, unregulated, do we really want to go there? That doesn't sound a good idea. But what we mean is not a school, not a formal school is delivering it, and therefore we have to look at how they're delivering it. And that's why the governor's part of the green paper are doing a call for evidence. I'm not convinced that the send green paper will have finalised and worked its way through the system by this time next year. In fact, it won't have done because it will take longer for legislation. I am hopeful that we will have a very clear understanding of whether the government is going to say, actually, we've done a call for evidence on unregulated or provision that isn't run by a school, and this is our view on it. Now, they may turn around and say, we don't think it should happen. Now, they may turn around and say, we don't think it should happen. They may say, turn around and say, we're fine for it to happen. They may turn around and say, we don't know what it will do. And that will partly shape what we need to come back with in terms of our offer. If they turn around and say, you shouldn't place any child for more than, I don't know, one day a week for a maximum of six weeks in a provision that's not a formal school, we will have to substantially change our offer in the city. And that's why we have to go there. In terms of the previous framework, the, the 12-month thing was an extension to the last framework. So the last framework is actually four years, but there's a legal timeframe there for continuing.
Thank you very much. Are we in agreement to accept the proposals from the officer as in the report? So what is to speak to me? It can be lonely out here, you know? I think you've got a yes and you're through to the next round. The next one is the introduction to, and these are items for discussion, introduction to education, children and families. Who's doing that?
Chair, Andrew's going to go first and then I'm going to do the children and families bit following on from Andrew.
So we have a presentation we're using. Children's Services in Sheffield have two departments, two parts to it. Education skills, of which I'm the director, and children and families, also known as children's social care, of which Carly Speechley is the director. And we both work to John McElrath, who as well as being executive director for People's Services, is also the designated director of children's services, which is a legal position that all, all local authorities have to have alongside a lead member, a lead elected member for children's services as well. I really don't intend to go through all my slides or to do them in detail. We'll just touch upon the, you've got this set of slides, a similar one for children and families. And the idea with both sets of slides is they just are a pack, a reference pack for you where there's information in there in terms of the structure, you'd be able to refer back to it in future months and future years as we continue to with the committee. So thank you. So the ambition in education and skills, I'll pick on the first, on Carly's slide. So over to you then, John.
Thank you. You said at the beginning, Chair, just to have some, some flexibility around the learning. So it wasn't as we rehearsed prior to this meeting, but as Andrew said, Carly Speechley, who is the director of children and families, is on leave, so I'll try and cover her slides. What it is important to note for members is the previously circulated set of slides was slightly incorrect. So we've updated them and we're going to recirculate the updated set of slides. Because also in this set of slides, the final two pages make reference to the nine recommendations set out in the care review, which we've referenced in a number of the discussions earlier this afternoon. So children and families, you'll see the children and families vision. Children who are safe and supported to achieve their full potential. Next slide please. In your packs, you've got a, a copy of this slide, which is the current structure. And the reason for including that is should you wish to have a direct conversation around a specific area of provision, you've got the name of the relevant senior officers within children and families. A slight moment on this slide, this is the sort of governance, if you like, for children and family services. We need to update it because as you'll see, overview and scrutiny for children is now within the remit of this policy committee. But you'll see that we have a improvement board for children's services, which is co-chaired by the lead member and myself as the executive director. And it's a partnership board that exists to oversee the ongoing improvement of children's social care so that we not only maintain our good judgment from Ofsted, but work towards where aspiration members have asked us to work towards, which is being outstanding as a children's services under the Ofsted inspection framework. They're the key areas of responsibility in terms of support for children. And the next two slides really set out the, the, the legal framework, the legislative framework for us as a unitary authority to provide the full range of services in children's social care, including support to children in need, being a fostering agency, part of an adoption agency, and also a range of services for children looked after. Next slide again, please, thank you. This is one again to pause upon. So you've heard a little bit this morning, this morning, this afternoon, in the finance update about the growth in demand, the increase in our demand over the last three or four years. But also it's important to note the change in the nature of that demand, the acuity of that demand has also become more complex. But you can see there that there are six and a half thousand open cases across children's social care. And then the subcategories beneath that are just the, the, the child's pathway, the child's journey. So early help cases, not requiring a statutory intervention from a children's social worker, children, children in need cases, child protection cases, which I'm sure you're familiar with. And then as corporate parents, the local authority is responsible for 691 children in our care in various situations, both within the city and across the country. And we also support 503 care leavers. And certainly the latter two categories form part of the corporate parenting board, which the lead member chairs to ensure we oversee the support of a good offer for our children, that we are the corporate parents for. Oh, back a slide, sorry. Oh, that's different to my pack. Next slide then, sorry, carry on. So that, oh, that's, that's, so just to remind everybody where we, where we currently are under the Ofsted ILAX framework, the ILAX framework being inspecting local authority children's services. And in 2019, Ofsted undertook an inspection of Sheffield City Council's children's social care and arrived at the judgment that it was a good children's services. And as I've said, we are keen to work towards being outstanding and certainly not to lose that good judgment. Next slide please. And then there's a number of ways in which we continue to focus on continually improving our services. And as part of the ILAX framework, the inspecting local authority children's services framework, there are, in between each inspection, each full inspection, there are a minimum of two focus visits. And you've got on this slide, the findings from the November focus visit when Ofsted undertook a two-day monitoring visit primarily focused on the decision-making at the front door, which is the sort of gateway into children's social care, stepping up from early help and stepping down. And the findings are there for you to look at, at your own leisure later on. More recently, we've had a front door health check very recently. And again, the recognition that our, our front door is, is secure and is a strength i- in this city in terms of its decision-making, its joined up partnership working in making decisions early and promptly to safeguard children. Some of the key challenges. So you've heard about demand and we can go into greater detail in these, into these areas through the, through the budget workshops over the summer. We've talked a little bit about supply and you heard from Joe around sufficiency and how our sufficiency strategy needs to work on developing a more effective range of supply to meet the needs of our children. Performance with a number of agency social workers, you will know it's well documented that it's hard to recruit and retain children's social workers. So a number of local authorities are reliant upon agency social workers who are certainly more expensive, but sometimes are, are, are less committed in terms of their longevity of time that they stay with, with the local authority. You've also heard about our budget challenges and we've committed to doing some work with you all over the summer months. Some further key challenges, which is the rising demand, the complexity of cases and the sufficiency. It's important to note that they are not unique to Sheffield. Every local authority in the country is talking about an increase in demand. It's talking about the challenge of cases presenting at the front door, especially on the back of a, a two-year pandemic. And that the sufficiency of placements, the range of placements to accommodate children is very, very challenging. And you'll have seen in many of the national media, not just the professional social care media, but national media talking about the spotlight on a number of local authorities who've had to place children in, in purchased placements, privately run placements, where the costs can be sometimes in excess of 30, 40,000 pounds per week. So it's, it's quite a challenging environment. Next slide please. And that's just again, just to amplify the point around demand over the last three or four years. You can see the, the steady increase and the break, the colours relates to the type of demand with regards to the children's pathway. But it's, it's sort of, over the last two years, it's a 10% increase. And, you know, that's, that's, that's a real challenge. And if you just think about quality social work, a social worker should have no more than 20 cases. If you think, if those 600 children were all in the children's social work domain of our business, and maths isn't very good, but, you know, you'd need 10 social workers for 200. So you'd need an extra 30 social workers to deal with an extra 600 children's cases. That would A be expensive, but also, as I've said, to find and recruit 30 additional social workers would be a real, real challenge. Next slide please. There's just some comparative data with our core cities in terms of our children in care, our children who we look after, who you are the corporate parents for. And you'll note that as one of the, as, as, as the core cities, we are one of the lowest, lowest authorities. So our numbers of children in the looked after system are low in our city. Our priorities there, so you've workforce, recruitment and retention of a high skilled workforce, sufficiency, which you've already heard from Joe about, quality assurance and performance. You, you can see it's missing the P, apologies, but we'll try and amend that and fix it before we circulate it again. Being Ofsted ready, achieving our budget savings, systems, technology and accommodation, and responding to the independent review of children's social care, which is the National Care Review. And that brings me nicely into the independent review of children's social care, which was led by Josh McAllister, published, I think, two weeks ago in May 2022. There are nine key areas, a couple just to highlight for your information. And as I say, we will circulate the link. It's about a 250-page report, but they are suggesting that there needs to be a reset of the children's social care system in England. And if we do, if we fail to do that, we will very quickly in the next decade be hitting over 100,000 children in care. Talks about a revolution in family help. And this is where it might help in terms of how we work with children who are at an early help threshold level and children in need who require a social work, social worker to be involved because of the assessment and the, and the protection aspects. And there's potential to redesign that model. So you might see a different type of professional emerge in terms of supporting that category of children. They talk about the child protection professional and the child protection practitioner being developed further to support multi-agency working, the development of further practice methodology in terms of unlocking family networks and supporting children to remain safely with their families. Next slide please. A couple from this final section of the care review. We've referenced the sufficiency and it talks about fixing the broken care market and giving children a choice and, and, and looking at placing children in loving environments and which, in placements which aren't based on, on profit. And I think this week Josh McAllister sent out a national plea to the teaching profession to encourage them to consider becoming foster carers for children in their local area. So you can see the, the concept emerging of a, of a loving home. Because if we can't place a children or keep children in their own family, the next best thing is somebody else's family. Then, you know, foster carer, then, you know, a child's residential setting. So you can see that being developed. But there is a, a growing conversation about the need to change the way we purchase placements and the way are they, they are provided. Because again, you'll have seen in the national media, a number of providers who are making profit out of accommodating children in, in, in the looked after system. And then the final point I just want to raise, because we had a conversation about budget at the outset of this meeting this afternoon. You can see point nine, which is about implementation. And Josh McAllister calls on the government to invest 2.6 billion pounds to expedite the proposals for the National Care System Review over the next four years. As I say, it was a government-commissioned independent review. We have yet to receive the government response to the review. And we will circulate the updated slides and will include in the minutes the link for the care review report. So you can access the care review report. Tried to do that as quickly as I could, Chair, apologies.
Hang on a minute. Have you, have you finished, Andrew? No, I didn't think yet.
Chair, sorry, we, we just need a second to bring up the other presentation.
Okay, right. I'm assuming it's on, on, on this, yeah? Is it, does that, does that mess your technology up if we take questions while you're doing that? Okay. Well, go, go ahead with these two questions and then we'll go on to yours, Andrew. Okay.
Yes, I just wanted to go back to one of the slides, which was, and I was trying to catch eye before we moved off them. So it was the implementation, number one of the nine that's in there, which mentions about resetting. And I wanted to know what that meant in, in that context. Was it all the rest that followed on or is it something separate? I think you'll understand it when we get there.
If I can, my, 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 my recollection is it relates to the, the following eight points in terms of the eight relate to the reset of a children's social care.
That's fine, that makes sense now. I just wonder whether it's something on its own or not.
Thank you, Chair. During the earlier part of the presentation, you were talking about how, how you were going about organising this. Along the lines of Ruth Hubbard's question earlier on, have the children involved been consulted?
So what we should have probably said is our children's involvement service in children and families is a pretty impressive service and they have care leavers for them, a children in care forum. There's great interaction with officers, men, senior officers in the council and with members. And we, Carly Speechley regularly visits our children's homes and Aldine House. There's, there's, there's extensive involvement of children in the children and families part of, of the business.
I do have a couple of other questions, but it's going to be very quick. One of them's really only a comment really. It's not this review by government, just a reinstatement of short start that they abolished at the beginning of their tenure. That was a comment. The other was a 2.6 billion over four years, about 650 million a year, spread over the whole of the country. It's not very much, is it?
I'll try and respond to the, to the, to the latter point, because the first point was a comment. The Association of Directors of Children's Services acknowledged that A, there's national underinvestment in children's services. This is a step in the right direction if it was to be awarded. There is more, there is more to do. And certainly the previous director, the previous president of the Director of Children's Services Association talked about a long-term plan for children with the associated national investment it would require.
I, I wouldn't hold your breath. It'll probably end up on a shelf gathering dust with umpteen others over the last 20 to 30 years that have spoken about investment in social care. care one way or another, because that's where they end up. Andrew?
Thank you very much. So in terms of education skills, our ambition, as described in our slide set, is that Sheffield will be an inclusive city, where we work together to ensure that all children, young people, get the right support at the right time, so they can live a happy and fulfilled life. And that's taken from the Sheffield Inclusion Strategy, which was previously approved by the Cabinet in February twenty twenty, just before the pandemic started. We've got five key commitments relating to that within the one-year plan. And we hope as the council's corporate plan continues to extend, that we will still have places within that. My service is spread, thank you, across five Heads of Service, and you've met three of them today, Tim here, Heads Access and Inclusion, and that includes elective home education, attendance, admissions. It also includes things like the virtual school for looked after children, alternative provision, and currently Nought Five Send. Kim, to his right, is Assistant Director for School Effectiveness. That includes early years, quality assurance, PE, music, Children's University. To anticipate a question, the next one down, participation and engagement is all about making sure that children, young people's voice is heard, and that helps to shape our services and also is reflected within the things that we do. English and additional language and school improvement more broadly as well falls under Kim. Mark, who you met earlier, is Head of Business Strategy, has a number of things, including school food, school transport, capital strategy, the Schools Forum, which is a body made up of schools, the council is represented to it, but it's where the decisions are taken on the three-hundred-and-fifty-million-pound school budget allocation. So it's not, those decisions aren't taken through this committee, they're taken by the Schools Forum in statute. And also academic conversion falls under Mark as well. Special educational needs and disabilities, that's headed up currently by Rose Ward on an interim basis. That includes educational psychology, hearing, vision impairments, autism, and send assessment as well. And then finally, lifelong learning skills under Kevin Strawn, which partly reports to the Economic Growth Committee as well on some of those activities. But some of the things that sit in this committee include chief special education needs specialist training in the north of the city, the six-to-nineteen study programme, family, adult, community education, gateway insurring refugee, and key stage five needs, along with a number of other things as well. In total, about eight-hundred council employees working education skills under those five Heads of Service. That's ten percent of the council's overall workforce, with fifteen directors. So it's a disproportionate number of staff in education and skills. And that's mainly, just going on to the next slide, we've got the largest number of statutory duties. So in education skills, there are a hundred-and-two statutory duties that the council is responsible for in relation to education and skills. And in terms of Carle's area, sixty relating to children and families statutory duties. So this committee has got over a hundred-and-sixty statutory duties to oversee, which is the largest number of statutory duties compared to any other committee in the council. We, I don't intend to go through, but on the next slide, we just picked out, on these slides, we just picked out, in the pack you've got, you've got all hundred-and-sixty-two statutory duties listed. But what we've done on these next few slides is just pick out five or six key statutory duties for each one, and then alongside them, giving you a flavour of the risk of non-compliance around that. So in lifelong skills, that goes everything from a duty to provide for named individuals, ensuring that we reduce our NEAT figures and so on and so forth. On the next slide, which is Access and Inclusion for Tim, duty to adhere to the School Admissions Code, it's a very, very complicated legislative landscape that, through to promoting school attendance. On the next slide, in relation to SEND, a duty to identify, assess, plan for children with SEND through educational healthcare plans. Going further down, a duty to work with post-sixteen, sixteen-to-nineteen academies and alternative provisions as well. On the next slide, in terms of school effectiveness and school improvement, a duty to ensure that educational functions are exercised with a view to safeguard it for children, through to number five, for example, a duty to comply with statute requirements on issuing performance standards and safety warning notices to a governing body of school. We've currently got three, I think, warning notices out to schools, and we've got a further two that we are considering at the moment. And we could brief the committee further to future point on that process. And then in terms of...
I think one thing you could do is brief the local members if you haven't already done that. That would be helpful to them, I think.
Certainly, that's very useful, thank you. And then finally, in terms of Mark, his area, statutory duties around school budgets and budget shares, homeschool transport, and food provision as well. So it's a very long and complicated list of responsibilities. We've just highlighted in our next slide some of the achievements from the last year. That includes a relatively successful area SEND inspection revisit in February, where we had seven areas of significant weakness, and where inspectors found that we've made sufficient progress in six. We have one still remaining to work on that. And we know, though, right across all seven, we still have got a lot more to do around that. Over three-thousand vulnerable people engaged in supported activity moving towards employment. All Sheffield schools have been supported very, very comprehensively throughout the pandemic, regardless of whether a school or an academy. We've launched an attendance campaign with a view to trying to improve our attendance figures that Tim related to earlier. In excess of nine-point-five billion pounds of the food vouchers have been provided to over thirty-one-thousand families in the city since October twenty twenty. And we have developed some new systems for supporting schools with critical incidents. Our priorities on the last slide are continue to develop and implement a citywide education strategy. And obviously, the committee will be fully involved in helping to shape and develop that, implementing the inclusion strategy as well, that I've already referred to, delivering sufficient improvement, SEND multi-agency transition through the Accelerated Progress Plan. My colleague, Joe Horabin, is Director of Integrated Commissioning, is the lead director for managing that, and will be part of actually helping to deliver that. Sustaining high percentage of complaints for educational healthcare needs assessments, we're currently complying at over ninety percent, so over ninety percent of EHCPs are issued in a timely fashion. I think it's near to ninety-five percent now. Continue to improve support for nurseries and schools. Tim's already referred to this, a new short-term alternative provision model, improving school attendance and reducing exclusion in all its forms. And just to pause on that a little bit, what we're talking about there is, is that exclusion, you can imagine exclusion as being excluded from a school or being suspended, but actually, if you're not attending, or if you're on a very part-time timetable, or if somebody's had a whispered conversation about you becoming elective home educated or whatever, then you are excluded from school. And it's about reducing all of that, and then reducing youth NEAT figures as well. Thank you, Chair.
Has anybody got any questions on that second part? Could you make them brief? Because that's four o'clock, and the big blow next door comes in at half past.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thanks, Andrew. My particular question is about food, and how we are currently looking at the health and wellbeing of some of our young people attending school, who are not necessarily in the brackets of free school dinners, but their families are on that kind of level where they're not, their income is quite low, but they don't reach the free school meal target. But it's quite clear that there is some problems with food and parents accessing food banks or cheaper alternatives to buying their weekly shots. Is there any work being done about monitoring those children, malnutrition, for example, with other healthcare, school visitors or health workers? And if that is getting done, who's doing it? Who's responsible for it? And are we getting regular information and outcomes about that type of situation for young people? Because I don't have to tell people in this room that children not being fed properly impacts hugely on their development, their overall development, but particularly their education and schooling development. And I can only see that getting worse over the next year or so. And it's quite a worry for local members in the wards that are the most deprived wards in the area.
Pissey Janssen, please.
Yeah, so in relation to food, obviously, the voucher scheme that I've referred to is specifically about providing additional resource to families outside of term time. So actually, there's continuous provision included in some holidays. But I appreciate that doesn't actually target that other area. Schools themselves have a number of strategies in place that we support them with around that, including breakfast clubs and so on and so forth, where food is also provided. And we work closely, I don't have the figures with me, in relation to nutrition. We work closely with our public health team. That will definitely increase further, obviously, the public health team until more recently focused on Covid. But one of our principal officers works for Joe in Integrated Commissioning, and that is certainly one of the things that we continue to monitor.
Thank you, Chair. Exclusions, I'm concerned about whether or not we do any work around, seeing if there are any particular reasons, whether there are any reasons from ethnic, you know, people from ethnic backgrounds, whether they find some things difficult that other people don't. People with disabilities, maybe invisible disabilities. And I know, you know, there's a lot of work done trying to identify those disabilities, but quite often they don't get identified. So, you know, I'm concerned about that. And my last question is totally unrelated to that, but it's that you mentioned critical incidents. What sort of critical incidents are you talking?
If I can ask Tim to answer on exclusion, then Kim on critical incident.
So really quickly on the exclusion stuff, we've developed an exclusions in all its forms dataset, in terms of the groups that Andrew mentioned. And that includes looking at around, I think, our manor, it includes our SEN, includes all of those broken down. And we've invested into, as I mentioned earlier, staff around attendance, trying to look at that joined-up picture. They're going to be using that dataset alongside the offices I've got. And then we've also put in place, we're putting in place an extra exclusions officer in the city. We've currently got one-point-eight full-time equivalent, adding one more. And they review all suspensions and then targeted advice. So that's why we're working on it from that point of view.
With regards to critical incidents, we've streamlined a more robust procedure for schools and put that in place. And that can range from anything from bomb threats and media inquiries, to anything that might be on the ground for schools and school leaders, that they need a one point of contact within the council to be reassured in terms of steps to take with regards to the safety of children in schools.
Can I just come back very quickly on what Tim said? How much coordination is there with other services where exclusions are concerned, for example, with the police?
So the staff that I've got, we provide key worker support where there's targeted issues going on, and that allows that sense of drawing services together. There can and should always be more, we know that. But what we're trying to look at is developing almost a team around the school model, so that we can work with schools and say, right, who's the team around you? How do we draw that together? And then when we look at our team around the family model, who's the right people there? So that's the work we're trying to get right systematically in the city, that will then bring those conversations in. There's also, in terms of, we know the outcome of exclusion is often linked to crime. There's two government-funded pilots in the city. So within our inclusion centre, an AP pilot that's been funded for three years, and then something called the Safe Task Force, which is trying to look at the reduction in violent crime. They are there to devise interventions. We're trying to make sure that we're wrapping around that. So it's something we're working on a lot. And that extra resource starts to target and bring people in a lot better. I'll start us off. So the next item's really around both the green and white paper. So you've got both Kim in terms of the white paper and myself in terms of the green paper. So just for people, and hopefully not to teach you to suck eggs, but white paper is policy position from government, green paper is consultation document. So I'll talk you very, very briefly through the SEND AP green paper, which is a consultation document and what we're doing there, and then pass to Kim. So the SEND green paper has come out of SEND review. The SEND reforms came into place in twenty fourteen in terms of the system that we're currently under. Various of you have been in various committees in terms of raising rightly the concerns around SEND provision. What government have recognised is three clear challenges. Firstly, the outcomes of children, young people with SEND or in AP are on average poorer nationally. Secondly, that navigating the system is difficult. And thirdly, that financially, it's an unsustainable system as it is. And so what they have said is a very clear vision that through both the SEND review and green paper, and then linked to the white paper, they'll create a more inclusive education system with excellent local mainstream provision, which will improve the experience and outcomes for children and young people with SEN and those who need AP. And I'm reading that from the presentation, from the DFE directly, so that you're hearing it from them. In the paper you've got is a summary of what's in the green paper. Essentially, there are four key chapters, one which is around creating a single national SEND and AP system. So what does quality look like? What does provision look like? What does naming the right school and EHC plans, streamlining all that? Secondly, is around support from early years to adulthood. So what should happen in mainstream schools? Unsurprisingly, there's references there in a government consultation document about the money that's in place, and the expectation, and quite a lot of links to the white paper. Thirdly, a very specific chapter around alternative provision. And as we talked about earlier, there's an intent to bring alternative provision into part of the SEND system. We know that more often than not, children at risk of exclusion and who are excluded, or children who require medical provision because they're too unwell, fundamentally need provision because of underlying needs, and we're not always identifying those underlying needs well enough nationally. So part of the intent is to bring alternative provision into that system, build capacity there of AP. The intent within the paper talks about upstreaming AP providers into mainstream schools to provide advice and guidance and expertise. Obviously, our situation in Sheffield is an interesting one in that, in terms of the conversation we had earlier. Short-term respite out from mainstream school or provision for children who need to move on to an alternative placement. But there's a very clear expectation of creating a performance framework around that and a new way of doing it. And as I said earlier, that call for evidence. And then fourthly, looking at systems roles, funding and accountability. So what they're trying to look at is a very clear understanding of what's the role of all the players on the stage, as they refer to in the documentation. And for local government, what's the role and remit there in terms of both our statutory duties that Andrew's mentioned earlier, and the way that we support schools and work with MATS. But ultimately, it does come down to children around school role, how are those children supported and wrapped around. One of the interesting things within that is an expectation of a national banding and price tariff, basically how schools are funded, support individual needs. So within the paper, you're taking it from what should individual needs be supported with, what should consistently be in place, through to how that should be funded, and then where that should be placed. One of the challenges within the paper, talking about quite clearly the growth of demand for specialist provision against the capacity within the country to do so. And finally, within that system role, looking at the local area inspection framework. So Andrew mentioned earlier, we've just had our revisit following the inspection in twenty eighteen. That framework is a one-off, that we've come under so far, is a one-off framework. We won't be re-inspected under that framework. A new framework will be issued. So the green paper is a consultation paper. There are twenty-two questions in it. I think I went to the wrong meeting, because I'm currently trying to draw our responses together as a local area for those twenty-two questions. And our intent is to share that with members of the committee once we've drafted that up for any further views and comments. The deadline was originally the first of July, it got extended to the twenty-second of July, as it took longer to produce easy read versions for families to look at in terms of those. So we have till the twenty-second of July to send in our response to those twenty-two questions. There are a lot of points, and I'm very happy to hear any... There are a lot of points and I'm very happy to hear any reflections that are needed to go into it. But I'll pass to Kim to do the white paper because they are intrinsically linked. So the green paper doesn't really, it references the white and vice versa. And so it's important that we look at both of them together when we think about responses.
I shall be swift and concise. The government has published its-
It's the first this afternoon.
I will attempt to. The government has published its schools' white paper entitled 'Opportunity for All Strong Schools with Great Teachers for Your Child'. This is a summary document from a 48-page government-led document released in March of this year. There are elements of this paper that we do know about already and we did know about already, but there are other elements of this paper which are brand new. Whilst this is a legislative paper, directional instruction from the Department for Education has not yet been issued. We expect that to be over the coming months. As Tim mentioned, this paper is to be read in conjunction with the green paper with many of the policies in this white paper to be achieved by 2030. The two new ambitions around the white paper are very much focused on children's outcomes, particularly in primary and secondary. The government have made no hiding of the fact and identified that there is a recruitment crisis within teaching. And under the executive summary of the schools' white paper, this is not just for teachers. This is also for head teachers and leaders at all levels. The section around 'An Excellent Teacher for Every Child' shows that this is about developing the profession at all stages of teaching. It's about supporting the infrastructure of special educational needs, also highlighted in the green paper. So the consultation on new leadership NPQs, as they're called, or National Professional Qualifications, including ITTs, which is initial teacher training, but also firming up the qualifications for SENCOs, Special Educational Needs Coordinators for Schools, and making sure that mandatory training is in place, as well as making sure that these posts are actually sitting within leadership teams. Under delivering high standards of curriculum behaviour and attendance, there are marginal gains represented here in terms of a focus on the early years framework and also primary. These focuses are also reflected within key stage three, so those children that are attending secondary schools. And something new that is seen here is literacy and numeracy tests for samples of year nine pupils. This is estimated from actually establishing some of those pandemic crises that has come through that we do not yet feel has manifested itself within education. There is also a focus on a legislation to modernise rules on recording attendance. We are delighted in Sheffield that we're fortunate enough to be involved in a national pilot with the Children's Commissioner, Rachel De Souza. And being part of that piece of programme can actually make us forge forward in terms of improving attendance, as you've heard through the statistics already today. A firmer approach has been seen to tutoring. And during the pandemic, this was very much an optional activity for schools. Myself, as an executive head teacher prior to January, it was something that I engaged with, particularly with the six schools that I oversaw in Sheffield. But that target has obviously been increased and actually the focus on that, quite rightly, now being in core academic option for the pupil area, so actually hitting those children from the disadvantaged areas. A stronger and fairer system. This is all about academies and academyisation. So clearly, one of the points the Department for Education have outlined is that if an existing multi-academy trust is in place, that they are to reach 10 schools or 7,500 children within the next eight years, as I referred to by 2030, the policies to be in place. We are acutely aware that in Sheffield, we have a whole range of trusts with varying experiences and varying strengths. We also have single academy trusts in Sheffield. That is one academy trust with one school. We also have multi-academy trusts, which contain anything from one school up to maybe 15 or 16. And we also have multi-academy trusts that are on a national level as well. Alongside this, we have our current maintained schools and the national picture with that, along with federated schools, is something that Education and Skills is focusing on. But the focus is also on strengthening the expectations and the new statutory duties placed on academies and academy trusts. Moreover, looking at the transparency in terms of their day-to-day and strategic and operational intents. There's also a greater focus on governance arrangements with multi-academy trusts and looking at how those arrangements are put into place across the sector. On councils, in terms of a legislative white paper, it's probably the most robust dialogue that I've seen in any recent paper. And it firmly outlines and completely cements the role of the local authority, specifically around three areas of admissions, safeguarding and conversion to academy status. In terms of 'An Excellent Teacher for Every Child', it's highlighted in investment in development of the profession, which I've mentioned earlier, which also includes the early years structure. I do have to say at this point that there is a small amount of investment, which is points that we touched on earlier and how far that investment for early years will go at a national level is unsure at this moment in time. There's going to be a greater inspection of initial teacher training to take place every three to four years, so a bit more robust. And finally, with delivering high standards of curriculum behaviour and attendance, the Oak National Academy is something that a lot of schools engage with, particularly in the pandemic, especially those staff that had to deliver online lessons to hundreds of different children. That has now become a new arms-length curriculum body, offering free support, free resources for all teachers nationally. So something that we would hope that Sheffield would engage with. And finally, the evidence-based research supporting the sector on high standards of curriculum behaviour and attendance will continue to be funded, particularly for bodies such as the Education Endowment Foundation. Okay.
Two questions, one from Colin and one from, I keep forgetting your name. It's Brian. Colin?
Yeah, one on the green paper, one on the white paper. Green paper, just actually protocolled new committee system. Normally, the response will be signed off by the cabinet member. So presumably, it's got to be signed off by this committee. Clearly, we've got to find a mechanism for doing that by the 30th of July. I'd suggest that we have a Zoom meeting after having it emailed with the chair, well, two co-chairs, vice chair and group spokesperson. This sort of thing will happen repeatedly where it was one person's responsibility and now lies with a committee. Secondly, an observation, and thank you for your things on the white paper. And I was particularly interested in the increasing role of councils in MATS and responsibility. I just wonder whether in the end, we're going to have councils sort of overseeing all the various foundation schools, academies, trusts and so on, having ultimate responsibility. We could perhaps call it a local educational authority. Yeah. The full, I think that was probably a good idea in the past, you know, having local control over local schools. Perhaps it's something we should consider, you know, as a radical idea.
You heretic. Brian.
Thanks, Chair. A number of things I could be saying on the green paper, but I'm just going to come on the white paper. Couple of things I wanted to mention was there's number eight, we've got modern foreign language hubs from 2023. We did have a good system of those, which was dismantled a few years ago. But my question is, will there be incentives for schools to be setting these up? They're going to look at what happened previously, less than 15 years ago, and see, well, you know, how long did they last? So, you know, what incentives are they going to be? That's a question back to government, I think. And secondly, again, there's a number of things I could mention. Number 28, under numbering system, a £40 million fund is promised for 24 priority areas among 55 disadvantaged education investment areas. I can see us being one of those. We're not already. Has that been confirmed? Not. Okay, but it should be. You would think so. It's a sad thing to say, but you would imagine it would be. But the other thing I was going to say about that, actually, there is a sting in the tail there, which is to do that they are connected, it seems, to academically focused 16 to 19 free schools, which may not be the way we want to go.
Can I just come back on just a point there, please, councillor? With regards to the modern foreign language hubs, absolutely, this is the dismantlement of those. I think the intention with regards to this is the focus on MAT growth and actually the stipulation being put on at multi-academy trusts to grow over a period of time is that the infrastructure comes from within them, very much like the teaching schools agenda, which was about growing those teaching schools across geographical areas and in demographic areas. How that is put into practice and the incentive around that, I will find that out from the DFE.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just a couple of comments myself. I don't know whether we're doing a or whether these Parents Careers Forum will be responding to this. I would imagine that they would. And we could perhaps have a chat with them, see what they think of the proposals. And the other is, at some stage, I mean, I don't know whether the people would agree, but I would like to have a discussion about SEND provision in this city, particularly in terms of mainstreaming it and whether or not the mainstreaming is being done equitably. I don't know whether other people feel the same, but it's something that I think, I personally think needs having a discussion at this committee about. I'm getting nods from a fair few people, so I'd like to try and programme that in somewhere. Yeah? Okay.
Can I just check for the purposes of minutes that you're happy to note the briefings, ask officers to explore how sign-off of green paper responses will work going forward in the committee system? And for the purposes of the work programme, look at scheduling a discussion on SEND provision and mainstreaming. Is that?
Does that cover your point, Colin, about having a, you know, cabinet member used to sign it off, we sign it off now? I'm not sure what the rule is, to be quite honest with you.
Neither was I, but it just occurred to me. I remember signing off things, responses in the past and I thought, ah. I bet nobody's thought, well, people may have thought of it, but it needs to be considered because it will happen in all committees and things, so yeah.
Chair, I'm happy to take an action to check that and confirm it for the committee.
Thank you very much. And finally, work programme.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be very, very brief, literally one minute. So you have in front of you the draft proposed work plan. We will work with the co-chairs, vice chair, the group spokesperson, developing the agenda further and would obviously welcome further suggestions. We've just had one from the chair around SEND and mainstreaming. And we are suggesting as officers a stronger education focus for the September meeting. And you've got the proposed September agenda in your packs. Thank you, Chair.
Peter.
Thank you. I'm responding to the call for ideas from John. I think we should be talking to the youth parliament as well. I think it would be a good idea to have their views on a range of items. Because we are dealing with children's matters, then we should have their views.
I couldn't agree more. And it's something that we fostered. Well, Colin, you were on the committee, weren't you? And I think Anne was as well. The scrutiny board that I previously chaired, we had a pretty good working relationship with the kids on that. I'm not sure whether it's the same kids, but absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Chair, could I just add to that, that we include in the children's voices a representative from the young carers as well, because they particularly have a very different education experienced than a lot of other children in the city. Thank you.
I think it would be a good idea to get as many kids from as many different backgrounds and as many different home settings, shall we say, as we possibly can. And that would hopefully get a proper spread of ideas and opinions on what life is like.
Yeah, agreed. Thanks, Chair.
Colin and then Mike.
Just Hult House funding was meant to be on this agenda. And so we need to not let it drop off. It needs to be shunted forward to the next one. Yeah.
Apologies, that's correct. It will be on the September agenda. Thank you.
Mike.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies if it's on the work programme and I've missed it, but I think it'd be really good if we could have a discussion on CAMHS because I think the need is going to be ever greater in, especially, like I said, after the winter, I think we've got ahead of us. Thank you.
Nods all round again. Okay. As far as I can tell, that's it. Unless somebody's going to tell me different. Yes, we do. We need to recommend, we need to accept the recommendations in the work programme with the suggested additions that we've had this afternoon. Is everybody happy with that? Any dissent? I've got to ask this question apparently. Any dissent? No, so we're okay. All right? You're welcome. And I think that's it for this afternoon. Thank you very much.
Just one final observation as I've got, looking at the clock behind us, about a minute. I wonder why the two and a half hour rule was introduced? Because we have rather tried to shoehorn the last little bits in. And, you know, another quarter of an hour might have been more there. It might be something to consider. Well, I suppose we're having the six-month review. I think it will feed it into the six-month review that there might be a provision that chairs discretion to extend the meeting by half an hour or whatever and things, so.
I'd like to second that, Chair.
I mean, personally, and I know sometimes people find themselves in a meeting where the subject that's being talked about doesn't exactly push their boat out. But I think if you're going to do this job properly, you've got to sit in this room as long as it takes to do that job properly. And artificial cutoff times, I just think are unhelpful. You know, there may be days when we come to these meetings and we finish in an hour and a half. Okay. There may be times when we need to sit here for four hours. Okay. If that's what it takes, then that's what it takes to do the job properly. And the two and a half hours, no, we should just knock off the compulsory finish time and just take as long as we need to take. Peter.
Thank you, Chair. I sat on the governance committee, which made these decisions as to what things should be. You know, whether it's two and a half or two or whatever. The thinking was that we wanted to make sure that the workload for councillors didn't extend too far beyond what it was in previous years. So that was the thinking, for what it's worth. But hey, we are where we are.
Mike.
Thank you, Chair. And while I fully support your spirit of inquiry and willingness to leave no stone unturned, I think we also have to bear in mind that some councillors have working lives in addition to the work on the council. And having endless meetings may introduce problems for that. Thanks.
Point taken. We can all go home now, I think. Thank you very much.